Okay, let's get going because Jeff's got a lot of material. My name is Sonia Sheer Hyatt. I am a member at CrossPoint and also part of our Missoula County Republican Central Committee. Joe and I are the committee central, sorry, Congressional Committee men and women for Missoula County. Les Bagnoli is going to give our invocation and then Fred Stout is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome, everybody. If you could bow with me. A word of prayer here. Lord Jesus, we love you and we need you. As we gather, Lord, we thank you for your consistent presence in our lives. Your Word reminds us that you are here with us right now because there are two or more here who will love you, Jesus. Jesus, you tell us in your Word that if my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and I will forgive their sin and heal their land. Lord, we seek you now again and confess, we have worshiped created things instead of you as our Creator and chased after what is pleasing to the eye and to our flesh. Lord, forgive us and hear our cry. Give us victory over those who oppress your people and who are corrupt in all they do. Lord, you are sovereign God and we trust in you. Be with us tonight and after we leave this place, Lord. Give us boldness and courage in all we do and say, in the power of Jesus' name, we pray.
I'd like to introduce Jeff Patterson. We're going to give him an hour and 10 minutes, which includes question and answer time because I'm sure plenty of people will have questions about this as they're trying to ram this through. But Jeff's been dealing with this for a long time and just has the county commissioners just kind of laughing at him, so we've got to band together and take care of this problem.
Okay, thank you. I guess I don't need both of those. Can everybody hear me okay? So first, thank you for all coming tonight. This is a good turnout and I appreciate you coming because this is a big issue that affects us all. Is there anyone here from the county? Anybody here representing the county? County agency?
No. Just the county.
Okay, okay. I'd just like to know that because if there's anyone here from the county, the county planners or the county commissioner's office or anybody involved that wants to be heard, I welcome them to stand up and be heard also. Anybody here from DNRC? Do we have any DNRC people here? Okay, how many of you are aware of the new zoning regulations enacted July 2022? Okay, quite a few. How long have you been aware? Months or when it came out? You've been aware for a while? Okay, so you're familiar with Chapter 7 of the zoning regulations regarding the riparian buffer area and the flood plains? Okay. I'm going to go through some of that so we can discuss it. And again, you know, I want this to be a real open meeting. I'm going to share with you a lot of information that I've gathered over the past several months, but really the reason I'm here is I want your input. I want comments, I want questions. I want to know how we're going to move forward because this is just not about me, this is about all of us. And so if you've got something you want to say, whether it's, whether you're agreeing with this or disagreeing with it, I'd appreciate your comments. So has anyone here received a certified letter from the county or the floodplain administrator in the past few months requiring you to remove personal property from floodplains?
Yes.
You have? Okay, since June of this year?
Yeah.
Okay, and it was a certified letter? Okay.
Containers.
And what kind of things were they asking to remove?
Containers, shipping containers.
Shipping containers?
Yeah, shipping containers, put them on my pasture land.
Okay, for those of you that couldn't hear him, he was ordered by the county to remove shipping containers from his pasture that he put in for storage?
That's what I was going to do.
How many of you have had invitations to any floodplain meetings with the county?
Years ago.
Years ago?
No, last three years. Well, they had big meetings in the fairgrounds there.
But nothing in the past year?
No.
Okay.
Was this all supposed to take place in this year? The change in the weather?
I'm sorry.
Wasn't this all supposed to take place this year or is it 25?
Well, it's been planned this year and my understanding it has been pushed out a little bit. They were going to have a final decision in July on the flood, new floodplain proposal, but evidently that's been pushed out. And we'll get to some of that when I go through this slide presentation. How many of you are aware that Montana is one of several states suing FEMA for fraud? I got two or three people that are aware. Okay. All right, well, I'm going to get started with this. Make sure I figure this thing out. I want to, I don't want to insult anybody's intelligence, but I want everybody to know why we're here and what the issues are. The first issue is the zoning regulations I was just talking about because they're huge and they affect a lot of people, not just people that live in the riparian buffer area, not just people that live on the water, but it affects really everybody. There's parts of this, this zoning regulation is 300 and some pages long. I focus a lot on Chapter 7 because Chapter 7 covers riparian buffer areas, river properties, floodplain properties, that kind of thing. And who does it apply to? On the face of things or on the surface of things, sometimes it looks like, you might say, well, this doesn't apply to me because I don't live on a river. But there's other parts of this zoning regulations that do apply. So then the next one is the floodplain, proposed floodplain expansion. And we just learned recently through Lynn Hellegard that there's 1,850 new homes or properties added to the floodplain. And we'll talk a little bit about how that happens and what does it mean to the property owner to be added to the floodplain and then how do we move forward to protect ourselves? So I want to just cover these so everybody knows what we're talking about. FEMA, of course, everybody, I think is familiar with what that is. DNRC, FIRM is really important, the flood insurance rate map, because if you have flood insurance now or if you're being added to the floodplain property, FIRM is what is used to determine whether or not you need flood insurance and how much it's going to cost you. And for years, that's what FEMA has relied on to determine whether or not you're required by federal law to have flood insurance. So BFE, Base Flood Elevation, that's a huge one. We're going to talk a lot about that. Base flood elevation is basically an elevation of water that has a 1% chance of reaching that elevation in any given year over a 100-year period. So it doesn't mean that every 100 years it floods. It doesn't mean that any particular year it floods. It just means that out of 100 years, there's a 1% chance that in any given year in that 100 years, the water will reach that elevation. So, and we'll talk about that more later. And then the RBA, Riparian Buffer Area, that's this, in some places like the Clark Fork, that's just 450 feet from the river. That's a riparian buffer area and Chapter 7 covers a lot of that, the restrictions and use of riparian buffer areas. So one of the controversies that I've run into here with the county is, I got a letter from Karen Hughes, and I'll, we'll talk about that here in a minute too, telling me that I really had nothing to worry about because my property's not zoned and that this only affects zoned areas of Missoula County. And in fact, she stated at the Clinton Community Council that it only affected zoned areas of Missoula County according to the map, but it doesn't say that. It just says zoned areas of Missoula County. It doesn't say, you know, pursuant to or according to the floodplain maps. So the second issue with that is that while the county wants to tell me that I have nothing to worry about because I'm not zoned, I also happen to know that their planning department is working on a zoning expansion that they told me would extend all the way to the county line. So if you're out of the donut, if you're not zoned now, that doesn't mean you won't be zoned in the next year or two, which means all these things we're talking about here tonight very well will apply to your property unless they revise the zoning regulations they have. And that's this applicability. I've read through this thing and I've read through the Supreme Court decisions on takings and as far as I can tell, that when they say it applies to zoned areas, zoning is really, really ambiguous. Now, the county has a right to create their own zone, their donut zone or different kinds of zones in their, within the city or county, but there are other zones like fire zones, flood zones, all these zones. So when they use the language zoned areas, that's pretty ambiguous and pretty broad. So also in, this is in Chapter 1 of these regulations. So I don't know if those of you that have read these regulations have really looked at Chapter 1 closely, but if you are in, if you're, if the zoning is applicable to your property, you can't grade it, you can't alter a structure or a building, you can't erect or reconstruct a building if you're in that zoned area or if you're in that regulated area. So, and this part really, really bothered me when I read it because number one, this is, this is an absolute violation of our Fifth Amendment and our 14th Amendment rights of the Constitution. To tell us that no building, structure or land shall be used or occupied in whole or in part unless in complete conformity with these regulations is illegal. They can't tell us that. We have a right to use our property however we want. What they're telling us is that they're taking our property through regulations. They're not physically moving us off their, our property. They're not physically saying that we're going to, we're going to own your property, but to tell us that we can't use it or occupy it unless it conforms with all our regulations is pretty much the same thing. I mean, can you go home right now and unlock your door and walk in and use your home if you're not in complete compliance or conformity with these regulations? And I know I'm not, and I would venture to say there's not a person in this room who could say their property is in complete conformity with 300 and some pages of regulations. So, you know, and I was in the legal business long enough to know that when you start splitting hairs and you're standing in a courtroom, they use this kind of language to say, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson, but the law is the law and this is what it says. It doesn't say zoned according to the maps, it says zoned areas. It doesn't say, you know, that we're taking your property away, it just says you can't use it, you see, or live in it. So these are issues that we really got to think about. Are we willing to allow the county to put such restrictions on us that we can't even enjoy our own home? And, you know, when you talk to them, and we had this, some of us, there were six of us that met with the county commissioners on June 28th and I complained about the ambiguities in this language. I complained about the regulations being too literal. And of course, they said, well, you know, it's, it's not that literal, it's not, you know, we can, we can decide whether or not to apply this or not, but what does it say? In Chapter 1, Section 14, it says, these regulations must be read literally and intended to be interpreted no more, no less restrict than stated. So I'm afraid when, at the end of the day, you're stuck with exactly what it's in the regulations. There's no interpreting them differently or making concessions. However, I want to, I just want to interject something here that's really not even in my presentation, but when we talk about the county's ability to make unilateral decisions kind of willy-nilly as they want, we all know that they do that. So I had the floodplain administrator out to my property because I was forced to buy a $939 land use permit, floodplain permit, to reconstruct a garage building that I'd had there on my property for the 39 years I've owned it and it'd been there for like 120 years, but it was collapsing, so I went to rebuild it and I had to pay a $939 floodplain permit. So he comes out and he's standing there in the yard with me and we're talking about all these hoops I got to jump through. And one of them is artificial obstructions, like this gentleman's containers. Those are called artificial obstructions and we'll get, we'll talk about that in a minute. But I said to the floodplain administrator, his name is Matt Hymo, I said, so according to the, to your regulations and according to the law, my garden over there behind that big wooden fence and my raised beds are an artificial obstruction? Oh, he says, well, we wouldn't say anything to you about that. And I said, well, my neighbor across the street, he keeps 300, 400 bales, round bales of hay stored there on his property. Those would definitely float down the river in a flood event or catch up debris, so they would be defined as an artificial obstruction. And he said, well, but he says, I would never say anything about that either. And so my question is, who gets to say something about what? I mean, is this now according to the law or is this according to an administrative agent and his likes or dislikes? See, so we're not being treated equally under the, under the 14th Amendment. We don't get equal justice. We get some administrator telling us what he thinks. So this is, I threw this in here because severability is important. Missoula County, Missoula County was certified by the state to write their own regulations and now there's several counties in the state of Montana certified to write their own regulations. And, you know, they use this term severability because it gives them some definite loopholes to jump through in litigation should you disagree or you appeal their decision. Severability is a common issue in litigation. And this is all part of that, you know, that, that they want, they want this regulation to be it. They want it to be what we rely on. Now, this was, this was just an excerpt from the letter that Karen Hughes sent me and I highlighted in red where she said that my property's not in the Missoula County zoning and that she'd attached some maps to demonstrate why it's not. And again, I'm not in a donut, my property is out of the donut, but it's still zoned, it's zoned by fire, it's zoned by the rural fire and it's zoned by the Forest Service and it's now zoned by DNRC. This is the map that she refers to showing this, oh, I'm sorry. What did I do? I messed up. Okay, my little pointer here. This is the, this green here is the zoned area that she's referring to. It doesn't, it's not really round, but it's what they call the donut. So everything within that donut is zoned because as you can see in the center here is the city of Missoula and it's not zoned for this stuff. So the, you know, the Clark Fork that runs through here down mains, or down through the main part of town where all the businesses are at and the big motel and everything, that's all in the flood zone. That's all lower elevation than their BFE, but it doesn't, none of these regulations apply to that. See? Okay, and I've already discussed that, so. So, so in Chapter 7, it says that basically all these lands that are identified as wetlands are subject to these regulations. So that's, that's what I've been, I've been screaming about is, you know, as I read through these regulations and I had lots of other people read through them, is what I find is there's all these ambiguities in the regulations. So we don't really know where we stand, whether or not we have an argument because an administrator can come along and say, well, you know, this section of the, of the regulations says something different and that's what I'm going to go by. See? So now, when it, when it says, when Karen Hughes says that my property and other properties out in the Clinton or out in Mullen Road, on Mullen Road or Tower or those places that are not in the donut are not affected because they're not in the, in the zoned mapped area. Oops. I, what did I do here? There we are. As you can see here, the Clark Fork River, let's see, down here, the Clark Fork River says east of the confluence with the Blackfoot River. It doesn't say anything about zones. It says, you know, where does this apply? You know, what's the riparian buffer? It's, it's all that property along the river, along the Clark Fork, east of the confluence of the Blackfoot River and west of Reserve Street Bridge, 450 feet. So whether I'm zoned or not, whether, whether you folks out in Clinton or out on, on River Road or out in that area, whether you're zoned or not, that's not what the regulations say. The regulations say east of the Blackfoot Confluence and west of the Reserve Street Bridge is what it applies to. And so when we met with the county commissioners, I made this issue. I said, you know, Karen Hughes is telling me I'm not zoned, so don't worry about it, but this regulation says that I am involved because I live on a river east of the Blackfoot And incidentally, that meeting went nowhere. We had, we, like I said, there were six of us, five or six of us that showed up there. We made some arguments. I guess I got a little angry with them, but they told us they would, you know, look into the ambiguities and they would work on it, but that was June 28th and I don't, myself or anybody else involved with me, I don't think any of us have heard peep from the county. So this I threw in there because again, I don't want people to think that this is just riverfront property owners that are affected. This says, this is in Chapter 7 again, this says that if you're building on a ridge line, you can't, you can't fall any dead trees. They have to remain standing and they have to remain where they fall when they decide to fall on their own for animal habitat. And so if you own 10 or 20 acres in Missoula County and you got dead trees on it, you better leave them alone because you won't be in conformity with all these regulations, which means you can't use or occupy your land. You see how ridiculous this is? I mean, it's, and I, you know, I don't know who drafted all this stuff, but it's, it doesn't make a rocket scientist to see that these things can't, they're not workable. So I want to move into now this floodplain, proposed floodplain expansion and I would just encourage all of you to look at your property, look at the floodplain history of your property, look at the DNRC maps, look at and see how it's affecting your property or if your property is affected because it's kind of all over the board. Properties that should never be affected by this floodplain are being included and I haven't gotten a really good, clear answer from DNRC or the county as to why they're This, again, is the county basically saying, you know, no matter what happens anywhere else, the county's regulations are going to take precedent when it comes to the floodplain. And we've already talked about that. And this, this is just some examples, these are just a few examples of what you can't do on floodplain property. If you have a little repair shop on your property, you can't do that, you're not in conformity. If, if you're doing some, some boat service or you're doing some repair, refinishing furniture on your property, you can't do that either. The one down here, oops, I keep doing that. Got it? Okay, thank you. I got big fingers, I push the wrong button all the time. The one that really gets me is the last one, research cooperative learning and training facilities. What are they telling us? If you're on the floodplain, you can't do any, any research, you can't have any educational programs on your property? I happen to have a barn, an indoor arena on my property that we use for interspecies communication that helps people with PTSD and thoughts of suicide. And we do that as a service to our community. For years, I funded it myself, I've used up most of my retirement and my income doing that. And now they're telling me that I'm not allowed to help people that are struggling with, with PTSD or thoughts of suicide and I can't do research to figure out how to help these people? I mean, that's just beyond me. So what does it do to be, what does it mean to us when we're put on the floodplain? Well, number one, it destroys our property value and it, and it makes it impossible for you to sell it to somebody unless it's for cash because they can't get financing on floodplain property. So it just really, if you're thinking about selling your property and moving somewhere else and you're on the floodplain, good luck unless you find a rich cash buyer that's willing to cash out. And then they're not going to give you, they're not going to give you top dollar for it because you're on the floodplain. It just simply prohibits the use and enjoyment of your property, which is a violation of our Fifth Amendment rights. It limits us from being able to make improvements to our own property. As I showed you before, you're not allowed to construct or reconstruct structures on your property or improvements on your property. Requires flood insurance. If you're on the floodplain and your property is mortgaged, you're required by federal law to have flood insurance. It's not a choice. It's not, "Oh, I get to buy flood insurance because I'm on the floodplain." No, you're required by federal law. And if your bank finds out that you don't have flood insurance, they can pull your note immediately. Or they can access your account to pay your flood insurance, which happened to a friend of ours real close to the Ravalli County line. They found out that the bank was taking money out of their savings to pay flood insurance because one little corner of their property was on the floodplain. Unfortunately, they had the money to go pay their note off to keep the bank from drawing money out of their account. But how bad is that? You know, you've got one little corner of your property in the floodway or floodplain, and so the bank has liberty under contract to just start taking money out of your account? So... And then the excessive permitting for anything defined as an artificial obstruction. The statute says they can charge you anywhere from $25 to $500-plus dollars for a permit to build on the floodplain or develop on the floodplain. They charged me $939 in Missoula County to replace an existing building. And the way I read that is, $25 to $500-plus means within that $500 range, not $600 or $700 or $900. But Missoula County just uses, again, on their own to charge you whatever they want. So... Now, what is an artificial obstruction? Again, this is a law that's a little bit ambiguous, but it's really basically anything that floats, anything that can float away in a flood event, or anything that will restrict floodwaters or gather debris from floodwaters, is called an artificial obstruction. And you're not allowed by law to have an artificial obstruction on floodplain property, like your containers. They would consider those an artificial obstruction. Now, I want to address that just briefly. And please understand, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a constitutional lawyer, but I don't believe that this artificial obstruction statute is legal. I think it's a violation of our constitution. Because, I'm sorry? Well, I know, most of it's illegal, yeah. But I mean, this is a thing that, as a group, we gotta come together and say, "Hey, you know, this is violating our constitutional rights." To tell us, to define artificial obstructions and tell us we can't have them on our property is depriving us the right to full enjoyment of our property.
Those containers, even if my lips, doors open, the water can flow in them or out of them, whatever, they won't float. But he had to drive by four other containers to get the money, and those people have absolutely nothing. This is, they do whatever they want to, spoil what they want. I had a neighbor that fished her wine about what the container were doing on my property, and that's why this happened.
Yeah, they targeted you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll tell you folks right now that, you know, my son lives just two miles down the road from me, and he has a short piece of Clark Fork River frontage. His property's long and skinny, so it's not much Clark Fork frontage, but he's got some. Since some of us met with the county commissioners on June 28th, my son received one of those certified letters, forcing him to remove a whole bunch of his personal properties from his floodplain. And in fact, the floodplain administrator is gonna be out there in the next few days to do an inspection to make sure he's removed everything, or they fine him a large amount of money. And so, it's curious to me, as like you've said, you had a neighbor that complained. I've made a pretty big stink with the county commissioners and floodplain administrator about what they're doing here. And so it's a little ironic that my son gets his certified letter targeting him and his property. And that's why I asked if anybody else has gotten one of those certified letters, or are they just picking on certain people? Because you can drive up and down the Clark Fork, or float up and down the Clark Fork, and there are tons of people that have artificial obstructions on their riverfront properties. And that's why, is everybody getting a certified letter from the county to remove these? Or just people that they're mad at? So... So, these next photos here, I just want to demonstrate to you what's going on with this floodplain expansion. This this right here is my property. This 13400 Tur Road is my property. This building right here is my indoor arena. It goes down here and right there. As you can see, the current or the past floodplain was all this in blue and red stripes. The red stripes is actually the floodway, and the blue is floodzone. So you can see it's Zone AE, and I guess they don't show what this zone is. But anyway, this was the floodway. This is the floodplain. And as you can see, my property's not in it. This is the new proposed floodplain map. Again, this is my property right here. And you can see now, it's all, all this is in the blue. All this is in the floodplain. Except for this house right here, they've taken out of the floodplain, and it's the same elevation as my neighbor's place here. So, I don't know yet why her house is out of the floodplain and the rest of us are in the floodplain. This is their new proposed floodplain map, that they're telling us, they're drafting and they're gonna lay it on us here in the next few months. I'm sorry? Um, yeah? Well, it goes through the middle of it. Interstate 90 is right here. And so there's floodplain on both sides here. And, you know, and I gotta tell you, this this right here, in order for this to flood, in order for this to flood right here, it has to jump over the interstate. The water would have to get high enough to jump over the interstate. And by the time it does that, Missoula's pretty much washed on down to Superior. Right? Railroad tracks is right next to the interstate right here. Kind of hard to see. So, yeah, the railroad and the interstate is between the river and that flood area. So then, I was giving this presentation to a group the other day, so on my way, it was on the the 13th of August, I went to give this presentation. So before I left, just for kicks and giggles, I run the DNRC map, or no, excuse me, the FEMA map, to check on my floodplain status. And what does it show? Shows your property is not floodzone. I typed in my address up here, and it comes back and says 13400 Tur Road is not in the floodzone. I just did this the 13th of August. It's just a FEMA, just a FEMA website. You just go on and look up FEMA, and and see, this is this is the FIRM, what they call the Flood Insurance Rate Map. This site is what you go on to. This site right here is what you go on to determine whether or not FEMA requires you to have flood insurance. So, even if I was mortgaged, FEMA's telling me I don't have to have flood insurance. My property's not in the floodzone. But Missoula County and DNRC is saying I am, all of a sudden. Now, one of my friends got a response to her Facebook post today, a lengthy response saying that, you know, "There's nothing to worry about here because this isn't carved in stone yet. There's a lot to do, and they're using a bunch of new data and modeling and all this stuff, and it'll go through this process. And after it goes through the process, then there'll be a public comment period, and then there'll be a period where the public can appeal." I'm sorry? No, I don't believe them, because they charged me $939 for a floodplain permit. So if this wasn't already in effect, if they weren't really applying this to people already, I wouldn't have paid a $939 floodplain permit. So the fact is, they're telling us, "Don't worry about it. It's still in the process, and you're gonna have a chance to give us your thoughts and your opinions." That's all BS because it's already a done deal. You see? So, if it's not a done deal, I want my $939 back, and I want them to get off my property and quit telling me what I have to do on my... They're making me, they're trying to make me cut great big holes in the side of my new shop building so the floodwaters can flow through it. And I'm gonna fight with them about that. You know? So, anyway, this is just another one I wanted to point out, is this is, this right here is the bottom of Brickyard Hill. I call it Bannaman Flats. Anybody from that area? Some of you, yeah. So you guys are now included in the floodplain. And when I brought this up at the county commissioners' meeting, I said to Larry Schock, who's a DNRC engineer, I said, "Why are you putting these people in that floodplain?" He said, "Well, because Missoula County doesn't maintain their levee over here, and if there's ever a 100-year flood event, saturation, it could saturate over here, and these people could get water in their basements." And I told him, I said, "And flood insurance doesn't cover anything underground level. So what if they do get floodwaters in their basements? They're not covered. And besides that, if the water ever gets high enough, long enough, to saturate over here into all these properties, again, Missoula County's now Superior. It's gonna wash it all out." So... So, I'm gonna kind of rush through this because I know we're running out of time here, and I want some questions and comments, but I'm just gonna just briefly tell you that we're dealing with BFEs, Base Flood Elevations, versus FIRM, Flood Insurance Rate Maps. Matt Heimel told me when I got in this argument with him that according to the Montana Rules of Procedure, or Administrative Rules, he doesn't have to use FEMA's Flood Insurance Rate Map FIRM. He can use BFE on my property, Base Flood Elevation. So he said, "You may not be in the floodzone according to FEMA, but according to the BFE, you are." And myself and Larry Schock determined that. So I asked them, "How do you determine it?" Well, they use LiDAR, and they fly over and they do elevations of your property, and then they determine whether or not your elevation is below or above the BFE. Now, the BFE, again, is an elevation that has a 1% chance of flooding. And as I pointed out to them, my property, for example, has, there is no record in 120-some years of water ever breaching the banks of my property. In fact, there's very little high-water mark records on the Clark Fork period. We know that in 1908, it flooded at Bonner. And why did it flood at Bonner? Because in 1907, they built a dam. Prior to that dam, the water flowed down and it flooded Missoula. But it backed up behind the dam and flooded mountain bottom to mountain bottom. And they've got pictures of that, so we know that that happened because of the dam. But there's no pictures, there's no high-water marks, there's no record that it flooded upstream anywhere, particularly at my place. So in order for there to be a 1% chance of floodwaters breaching the banks of my property, for example, they have to show that it happened one other time in 100 years. And it hasn't, so there is no 1% chance. So the BFE is just a crystal ball prediction. And that's what they're doing to all of these, all these properties that are being added to this floodplain are just crystal ball predictions based on modeling. They use what they call modeling to determine what they think's gonna happen in another 100 years, or any given year in the next 100 years. Well, to start with, their modeling is based on what's called HECS modeling. HECS modeling is a software program that's used by NOAA and DNRC and other engineers to determine hydrology and the flow of water. I pulled up the manual for that software and read through it. I read through part of it. It's pretty grueling, but what I learned was that in order to do modeling, you have to have a lot of data that they don't have. So, because they don't have that data, there's just a whole lot of guessing going on. And I asked an engineer friend of mine to approach DNRC and Missoula County about the data that they were using to determine this BFE, and their response to him was, "We can't give that to you yet because we're still in the process, but once it's finalized and in effect, we can share that with you." So eat this cake, and after you're done, I'll tell you what I put in it. See? So... So anyway, that's what we're facing here. We're facing the state of Montana has got laws on the books that are illegal. We got County of Missoula that's using some of those illegal statutes to kind of run them up with their regulations and employ rules and regulations on us that are excessive. So, some of us got together and we created a group called CAER, Citizens Against Excessive Regulations. It's spelled C-A-E-R. Citizens Against Excessive Regulations. We're not a group that wants to be out there and say, "We don't want any more regulations. We don't want the county doing this or doing that." We just don't want these excessive regulations that are taking our properties away illegally. And we want our legislators to go back and review some of these laws, like this artificial obstruction, and an administrative rule that allows county agents to put our constitutional rights aside with an administrative rule. And keep in mind, an administrative rule is not law. All that is, an administrative rule only clarifies law. But agencies today are using administrative rule as if they were law. And so, for Matt Heimel to tell me that the administrative rule allows him to ignore FIRM and use BFEs to put me in a floodplain is not legal. And so, we need our legislators to come together and examine some of these statutes that are on the books and fix them. Yes?
So, then, can't you sue? Couldn't we take this to court, or is it not just the legislative?
No, we can sue, and that's something I should talk about, is it's a whole lot better if our legislators address this, and we put some bills on the table to amend, or maybe even eliminate some of these laws that are on the books that are violating our constitution. And that's really important, because it's important for our legislators to understand that it's been said many, many times way back. It started in 1898, and I think it was Nolan versus Dolan. The Supreme Court said, "A law that violates the Constitution is repugnant and is to be considered to have never been written." And so if there's a law on the statutes that is violating the Constitution, it's up to our legislators to say, "We gotta get that out of there." Or at least change it so it doesn't violate our people's constitution. So, yes? I'm sorry? The Chevron ruling? Yeah, that's a good question. The Chevron ruling, Chevron was ruled on like 40 years ago by the Supreme Court, allowing agencies, government agencies, to write their own regulations, basically, in their own laws. Just recently, in August, the Supreme Court revisited that, and they repealed it in an unanimous decision to repeal the Chevron decision, because they said that government agencies have no right to interpret the law. And so, our state and local agencies, they don't get to go to an administrative rule and say, "Well, we're gonna decide that the statute is ambiguous, so we're gonna just apply this rule..." to just apply this rule and we're going to make up our own interpretation of that law." The Chevron... The Chevron decision says, "No, you don't get to do that." And in fact, there was another case and that was just ruled on, I think, in a majority ruling of the Supreme Court that said that agencies and legislators alike have no business writing laws or making regulations that violate our Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights. And if they do that, we're to ignore them. So when we have counties that are saying, "Well, we're going to write this new set of regulations that says that you can't use or occupy your property unless you meet our regulations," the Supreme Court says, "No, you don't get to do that." So now let's talk a little bit about remedy. What do we do about all this? Number one, none of us can do anything about it on our own. I've fought diligently and all I've done is gotten myself crossways with the county and now my son crossways with the county because I've been such a squeaky wheel. And I could sue the county and spend thousands and thousands of dollars and probably lose because it's one guy against a whole team of lawyers. And when you sue the county, two things happen. They turn it over to their insurance company and the insurance company employs a whole staff of lawyers to fight with you. And they're using your taxpayers' dollars to fight against you. See? So if I sued the county, all you guys would be paying to battle with me. So to me, it makes no sense to sue the county or the state. What makes more sense is to sue the bad actors that caused this stuff. You know, to sue the commissioners individually and personally, the floodplain administrators, the people who draft this stuff, they're the ones that need to be held accountable for what they're doing because they're running amok with their authority. And US 42, Section 1983, gives us the right as citizens to sue bad actors for violating our civil rights. And when we sue a bad actor for violating our civil rights, they don't get to go to their boss at the county and say, "Hey, look, I'm getting sued, you know, hire me a lawyer." Because when they get sued personally, they have no right to use taxpayers' dollars to defend themselves from their personal acts. So to me, it makes a lot more sense to go to these people that are writing this stuff and our commissioners. I told the commissioners when we had the meeting with them, I said, "You three signed off on this. Your John Henrys are on the bottom of this document that violate our civil rights and we have a right to sue you for that." And they didn't like that very much, but it's probably why I haven't heard back from them. And so the next thing that you'll run into is qualified immunity. And you'll hear this come up. I've had people argue with me, "Well, you can't sue that guy because he's a government employee. He's an agency head and so he's got qualified immunity." And to explain that a little bit is there's absolute immunity that judges are awarded to protect themselves from being sued every time they turn around. And then there's qualified immunity for public works, public employees. So if they screw up accidentally, you know, they don't get sued. The key to a 1983 action is what the Supreme Court refers to as a Sossier test, which is a two-pronged analysis of qualified immunity. And that means the first prong of that test is, was there an established law that protects you from this act? And two, does that government agent, did he know about it or should he have known about that law? And if you can prove those two prongs of that analysis, you defeat qualified immunity. So basically, if a government agent, whether they're a judge or a floodplain administrator or a county commissioner or a planning agent, if they're acting outside the operation of law that violates your civil rights, you have a right to sue them under the 1983 section of Title 42. So, and you know, I don't think this is something you want to do to make money because I don't want to sue some county employee who personally, who doesn't have the money to pay a lawsuit. I couldn't care less about the money. I want accountability. I want people to start saying to themselves when they drive out to my property and get out of their car all smug as can be and say, "Well, you know, I'm the floodplain administrator and I get to tell you what you're doing, what you don't do." You know, they may not act that way if they realize they could get sued for their bad acts. And so that's just something to think about. How do we approach it? And that's where we're at now. Where do we go from here? Yes?
Why not a class action suit? For everybody that's affected by this? We're a class of people that can make decisions.
Absolutely. A class action suit would be... A class action suit against individual bad actors, I think, would be the right way to go. And that's why we're here tonight is, like I said, I can't do this on my own and none of you are going to do it on your own. None of you are going to go home and say, "My property is at risk and I'm just going to go hire my own lawyer and fight this." Because it would cost you more than you'll ever imagine. And you're fighting insurance lawyers and county lawyers and, you know, and I've been down that route. I've defended myself just recently against the Department of Revenue and it was me against three high-powered lawyers and a staff of paralegals and interns and, you know, it was pretty intimidating to sit there in a courtroom and have to defend myself against all these people. So, yes?
There is one other long shot. My name is Chris Coldice.
Come on up and use the mic.
You guys can all hear me, right?
Jeff, thank you very much for coming today and taking your time. Myself and I know many of you out there appreciate it. There is one other long shot. Instead of going through a lawyer or waiting for legislation to pass, that is removing a county commissioner. I am Chris Coldice and I am running against Josh Slotnick. The election is November and I would appreciate your vote. I myself have been doing some door knocking. I've been passing out flyers to let people know. I am 100% against the floodplain expansion. And if you want to know what my role would be, is it takes the county commissioners to vote on allowing FEMA to act in our county. And I am against FEMA acting here. I would ask FEMA kindly to leave. FEMA is here because they need our money. This is a money grab issue. The county commissioners are short on their budget, which is unaudited, but they also know that they need money. So FEMA is willing to give them tens of millions of dollars to put over 1,800 properties in the floodplains because they know they'll collect the revenue through the insurance, which is through Fannie and Freddie. So anyways, if you guys want to speak to me, I'll be in the back. I'll let Jeff continue, but thank you again for listening.
Thank you, Chris. That is a real viable solution here is we need better leadership. Yeah, Brad?
I do have a pretty boomer. Is this on? Okay. You have to swallow it, is that what you're telling me? Hello? It doesn't... Check and see. I mean, I... All right. I have a pretty booming voice, but I want to comply with the request that everybody else had because I asked Chris to make sure he used the microphone. First of all, you had an acronym, WI. Is that the Wildland Urban Interface? Is that what you referred to? Okay. One of the slides you showed had the following comment and because I'm old, I'm going to read this. It talked about, "The regulations apply unless specifically exempted." And I've heard some rumors about certain entities, whether they're business or individual, that have been exempted from the floodplain regulation. Would you take a moment and expand on that a little bit for us? Because I think it's fairly significant, what that entails.
Okay, I will as much as I can. I'm a little confused myself about some of these exemptions. I know that the city of Missoula, some of the businesses in the city of Missoula that are in the riparian buffer area have been exempted. And my understanding is some of that has to do with the public need. If there's a public need for a business, they can apply for some exemption to the regulations. The other is ag. There are certain ag properties that are exempt from the zoning regulations. Now, that doesn't apply to the floodplain regulations, but it does apply to the zoning regulations. And to be honest with you, the county doesn't admit that, but there's a Montana statute under Title 76 that says that no county or political subdivision may enact or employ a regulation that interferes with agricultural activities. And so that's one of those exemptions. And in fact, that's why I got crossways with the Department of Revenue, is they're denying my ag classification. And so I had to go to battle with the Montana State Tax Board over that. And it's been months and no decision's been made. So I apologize that I don't know more about these exemptions. I probably should, you know, research that. But you're right, there are businesses and people that get exempted. You know, I showed you that one map of... Let me go back here. This one here, I showed you this brand-new house. It's a brand-new house built right here, has been exempted from the floodplain. And I can't figure out why because it's the same elevation as all the houses around it. Pardon? Well, I don't know, but... Yes? Okay, would you step up the mic so we can hear you? Again, I want as much from you guys as... I'll talk all night, so you guys got to step in.
My name's Leo Hanson. I live two miles from the county line, from Florence. I've got 100 acres right on the river. And properties off the river. And it's our family property. It's been there since the 50s. They're doing everything you've heard him say about not allowing this or that or rebuilding this. I've already gone through. And his question about who they will exempt depends on who is kissing their butt and how much money they got. I've watched probably 10 properties in my area get approved, get taken out, just because they've... I don't know if they're greasing somebody's palm or... I honestly don't know. I've got a pretty contentious relationship with this Matt Heimel and Todd Kleats, is it? Todd Kleats? I know, but I went rounds with him for years. I've been accused of everything and rightfully so. I did put in a septic system once without a permit. I just fixed it. I just replaced it and got caught. So, yeah, it was terrible. I put it back in exactly as it was, but anyway, anything that he's saying, I've already been through. If any of you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I don't know that I have much more information than him, but I'm kind of... A member of my family is involved in a lawsuit with this exact same issue. I didn't know this was going on or I'd have come and seen him. I didn't get anything in the mail. I got this off Facebook or I wouldn't even be here. So if... I'd like to talk to you after.
Yeah, we will. Yeah, thank you for your comments. And that's one of the big issues is, you know, we're just not getting out there and getting enough people. There was 1,800 postcards that were sent out to the new 1,800 properties being added to this floodplain. And, you know, this is a wonderful turnout, but a small number compared to those that are being added that are not realizing how serious this is. Yeah, Chris? Right, yeah. Chris and I will be on KGO Talk Back Radio Monday morning. Chris is going to be... It's kind of his show, but I'm going to be there to support him and talk a little bit about what we're talking about here tonight. So, yeah, Robin? So, yeah, and some of that, I'm going to take responsibility for that. I think I might have dropped a ball in making sure that we didn't get everything combined, but we're trying to do a better job. I... My roof got caved in by the big storm, so I've been on my roof pounding nails for the past week, so I've been a little bit behind. But we need to get more people involved. I created a website called montanaCare.com. You can look that up. And but Robin just told me today that it's not working, so I emailed him to find out why. Hopefully, I'll get it back online. But a lot of this information will be on that website, or is on that website. I just need to get it working again. But we need to get more people involved. And then the next move is there's a sign-up sheet going around for your names and emails with contact information. So we can send you updates and meeting dates. But we now need to decide... It's kind of take-action time. We need to either put the pressure on the county commissioners to sit down with us and get serious about redacting some of this stuff or amending some of this stuff. We need to sit down with DNRC and say, "We've had enough of this violation of our constitutional rights." And we need to put them on legal notice that in each one of these actors, we need to put them on legal notice that if they're going to continue violating our civil rights, we're going to be forced to bring litigation against them. So, yes?
Have you spoken to the law firm about the merits of the case?
Yes, you know, I consulted with a friend of mine. You know, as... I don't know if some of you read it out front, but I was a private investigator for 38 years and did a lot of this kind of work and a lot of homicide-suicide work and broken family stuff. But so I worked with a lot of lawyers. And one of the lawyers I worked with was the director of the head counsel for the Montana Innocence Project. Name was Larry Manch. He's a friend of mine. So I was talking to him about something else one day and I mentioned this and he said, "You know, my best buddy that I went through college with in Illinois or Iowa has been practicing this law for 40 years, eminent domain and takings." And he said, "Throw something together and let me shoot it to him." So I gave him that document I wrote up called An Overview and an article I wrote called The Taking. And Larry sent that off to this guy in Iowa. He responded by saying, "It was well-written, thorough and right on the mark with what we battled here in Iowa." And so I feel comfortable about the direction we're going, but we need to find a lawyer or a team of lawyers that will represent us in this case as a class action. Yes? No, I think... Yeah, a lot of people couldn't hear that. Yeah, could you...
Hello, hello? Is there a way that they could slip this in in the middle of the night without anybody knowing and then when we vote Chris in, can it be reversed?
Yeah, actually, they are slipping it in the middle of the night. That's what I was saying earlier. You know, they're telling people that there's this process that they're going through and don't worry about it because there's going to be an appeal period and a comment period. Well, that's all BS because they're already doing it.
Can it be reversed?
Well, not without legal action, I don't think. You know, it's like I've already paid my $939. I've already jumped through all their hoops for a year to try and get this permit. And so that's probably... I'm probably never going to recover that, but as a group, we can stop them from doing it to other people.
Great, tell them what we need to do.
Yeah. So, yeah, the question is, can they slip it in in the dark of the night? They have. So... So I'm going to wrap this up, but my last comment is... Oh.
I just wanted to comment. When I was on city council, a group of citizens got together to sue the city over the zoning. And I can tell you, it will work to your advantage if they do pass this in the dark of the night. Because if they haven't passed it yet, when we sued, that's what they got us on. Well, they might do the right thing. So if they don't do the right thing, then you can sue them individually, is what the judge told us. So I think going after them individually, that will work. And I have talked to Jeff quite a bit about legislation that I'll introduce in the session if I get back in. If not, I'll shop it to somebody.
So, the message that Jeff has been talking about was, I put on three different Frenchtown sites about this, because nobody in Frenchtown really knew anything about what was going on, except for the postcards evidently. But she said, 'cause she called the county. And she said, "Just got off the phone with the county. Right now, we have draft data. The next step is preliminary maps, possibly later this fall. Once we receive the preliminary maps, tentatively in November, we will have a press release, public notice, schedule of outreach events, and more information posted about all the public data. After that, which could be several months after release of preliminary map products, DNRC and FEMA will open an appeal period. This will be an opportunity for due process where the public may submit comments or appeals regarding the map and study. There are different levels of information that FEMA will evaluate for a comment or appeal. For example, to appeal the map boundary, someone would need to be able to demonstrate an error in the data and model. Depending on what kind of appeals are received and how many, it could take at least six months to resolve the appeal period. Sometime after that, if the maps become effective at the county level for insurance rating purposes, the county will be required to adopt the maps as a condition of continued participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The county may decide through ample public notice and public meetings to adopt the maps before FEMA, where more restrictive as best available data. But that is a very early conversation, and there are many details to resolve before going down that route. Just so you know.
Yeah.
That's the garbage that she got back from the county. And she's buying it, hook, line, and sinker.
Yeah. And again, to say that the preliminary maps will come out later, they're already out. So, and they're already in effect. It's why I paid $939 for a permit, see? So they're just not, they're not being honest with us, not being transparent. And so, again, I hope you signed that sheet. I hope that you go out and talk to some neighbors and friends and encourage them to come to the next meeting. And then we have to start taking action. We have to put together a legal team. I know Chris is gonna work hard if he gets elected, but he's one out of three commissioners. So I think it's gonna take a class-action suit, some class-action suits against a number of people to get this resolved. And I think when they realize that we're serious as a group, as a citizenship, they may be forced to repeal all this and get more reasonable about it. And that's all we're asking for. We're citizens against excessive regulations. We're just asking them to be reasonable.
Another thing about Chris, you guys. So with Sheehy running here and Tester getting all this out-of-state money, so much money is going to Sheehy that all of our local candidates, Chris included, Lynn, so many others, they're not getting a whole lot of help. So if you guys can help in any way, putting out signs or doing anything, door-knocking or anything, we need people to step up to get his name out there and many of the other people that are running. And, 'cause they can't do it on their own either. So we need to get their names out there, too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so my time is up. So, oh, we got one more question here.
Thank you, Cindy. And I just wanna add to that, that we have the best group of candidates that we have had in many, many years. I've met every one of them, we're working alongside of them. And I can tell you, it's a great joy to go out there and practice our rights as Americans to help these guys get elected and change the flow of where things are going in our town. It's really easy, you can, there's all kinds of different jobs. I can only echo what Cindy said. Just get involved any way you can. We've only got two months left, and we would love any help we can get. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for coming and listening.
Here, would they please stand up? Adam, Lynn, Chris. You know, we've got, like they said, very good candidates. Thanks, Adam, Lynn. Okay, ballots go out September 20th. Les and I had planned to have another town hall on October 5th, but I think that's gonna be too late, because as soon as people get their ballots, they're gonna vote. However, do any of you know about the Do Not Retain for incumbent Supreme Court justices? Okay. This is something that we need to really, you know, put into effect. If there is an incumbent Supreme Court judge on the ballot, you need to mark "Do Not Retain." Any judge. Because they are doing a terrible job in Montana. We've got one of the most left-leaning Supreme Court justices in the United States. So how many would be interested in having another town hall where we could have Pascal Redfern come and explain this like the Thursday after we get the ballots? So that would be, I think it's the 27th of September. Is that right, Les? Oh. Okay. So I don't know if people wanna hang on to that and listen to Pascal talk about, you know, the Do Not Retain on Supreme Court justices or judges. Anybody have an interest in that? Jess? Hold them up high! Okay, so I'm gonna give the mic to Les. He's got a few things to say. Okay, then we could still do it.
Okay, again, I really appreciate everybody being here. I'm one of the pastors at the church, and we are very politically active. Our pastor is passionate about turning the ship around in our city, but also in America. There are three constitutional initiatives on the ballot, and all three need to be defeated. Our participation in that is, we're very passionate about life. And I wanna share, we're having a very big event. We signed up for this. Different churches are allowed to present this movie. It's a national release, but it's only gonna be shown in churches. I think there was only five churches in all of Montana that are gonna show this. So we're gonna show this movie this Sunday night. And I wanted to show you the trailer and speak to it briefly.
What Christians often don't understand in the culture wars and in the fight for life is that abortion is not just one issue among many. Abortion is almost the linchpin upon which the liberal establishment swings. But what happens when you pull out a linchpin? The door falls off.
It takes a long time to go from a few intellectuals believing some bad ideas to bringing those ideas into the culture more and more and more, until they bear fruit. The answer how we got here is because of the silence and inaction of the church.
Somebody might say, "Well, you know, Margaret Sanger, she didn't quite know exactly what she was doing." Well, first of all, you're speaking from ignorance, because she wrote about herself, and she wrote what her plans were, so much so that she, hello, impressed Adolf Hitler. How do you impress Hitler?
A father walks up to me wearing a BLM shirt, and he says to me, "Why are you out here fighting a white man's issue?" But he was a walking poster child for all things CRT, because in critical race theory, you see racism in all things and at all times. Even when a 6'4", 260-pound black man is trying to save a baby...
We're going to expose and discover who the real Margaret Sanger was and how her attack and assault against the family in America explains our current culture of death and upside-down world that we're living in today. This is where it all started. It was here that Sanger opened up her first unlicensed, illegal birth control clinic in 1916.
Study the past, not just to understand what happened then, but to understand what's happening now.
This is a leviathan. It's a fitting place to remember what happens when bad ideas are taken to their logical conclusion.
Stop waiting for someone else to grow a righteous culture of life for you and on your family's behalf. It will not happen. If not you, who? If not now, when?
So it's this Sunday night, 5:30 here at the church, and it's free, so I hope you can join us for that. One other note, we have a person who is part of the TPUSA, Charlie Kirk's organization, Turning Point USA. They have an eight-week Biblical Citizenship Class. We've done that once a year here. It's an outstanding class. It's gonna start next Monday at 6:30 and run for eight weeks. Tremendous content in that, and you can sign up for that or just come on Monday nights at 6:30 and participate in that as well. So I'll hand back the microphone to Sonia.
Okay, following that, Robin Surtell wanted to be here tonight, but she is running her Montanans for Life meeting tonight. If you don't know who Robin Surtell is, she is a three-time abortion survivor. Pretty amazing story. But this is the statement she wanted me to give for her. "This election cycle, there are three very important ballot initiatives to be aware of, CI-126, CI-127, and CI-128. It's important to note that these are not bills for proposed laws, but proposed constitutional amendments. Our state constitution is the measure by which all our state laws are determined, and changing it should only be done with extreme caution. Amendments once made are not easily removed. All these proposed initiatives will not change an individual law, but will amend the state constitution itself, thereby providing the framework for all of our laws regarding these topics to change." CI-128 is a very broadly-written initiative that will prevent parents from having the legal right to know if their minor child is having an abortion, yet will protect sex traffickers, statutory rapists, and other sexual predators who take their victims to abort the children they conceive. This will create a favorable environment for sexual predators and human traffickers, causing the number of those atrocities to skyrocket here in our state and making Montana the abortion tourism destination of the West. In addition, the way the initiative is written, it will be likely the legal underpinnings of laws to remove all vestiges of parental rights, giving our vulnerable children over to transgender treatment and surgeries. Under the guise of women's health care, this initiative will prevent women who are hurt or killed during an abortion to have any legal recourse, not to mention the fact that these abortions won't need to be done by a doctor. According to CI-128, they can be done by just about anyone who is a health care professional, such as a dental assistant or occupational therapist. Finally, that right-up-to-birth part is, if a counselor deems a woman to be too stressed or depressed during pregnancy, she then qualifies to legally kill her baby, no matter what part of the pregnancy she may be in, right up till birth. While we don't have many late-term abortions nationwide at this time, we know statistically that every time something is legalized, it skyrockets. Friends, we cannot allow this to happen in our state. We must prevent this from becoming a part of our state's constitution. It will prevent parents from knowing about or having a say in their children's decision to abort their baby. They won't even have the right to be informed. We know the state Supreme Court just overturned a law to prevent this from legislating from the bench. This is not a law, but a proposed amendment to our state constitution. It will do the same regarding transgender treatment and surgery. No parent will be able to legally tell their child no if they want to abort their baby or consider trans-surgery treatment. It will legally wedge the state between the parents and children, destroying the family as we know it. Abortions will be made legal right up to the moment of birth. This will allow for painful late-term dismemberment of the preborn baby. We, the taxpaying citizens of Montana, will be financially responsible for these babies being killed, because Montana Medicaid pays for abortions. Partial birth abortion, where the newborn baby's limbs are ripped off of its body and its skull is crushed, killing it as it's being born, will be legalized. Sexual predators will be given safe haven to bring their victims to abort the babies created by their crimes with no questions asked. This will create an increase in sex trafficking and cause our state to be even more of an abortion tourism state. Mothers who are injured during the abortion procedure will lose their right to legal recourse, as well as the family members of women who are killed by botched abortions. Innocent babies, made in the image and likeness of God, will be killed in vastly increasing numbers. This all being paid for out-of-state money. Governor Pritzker of Illinois has been a major donor, as well as folks from California and other blue states. Millions of dollars out-of-state money have poured in to support this, and the signature gatherers were brought in from all over the country, paid handsomely, and given very deceptive language to use. The language of the initiative is intentionally vague and deceptive. It talks about abortion as health care. We know that health care heals, but abortion kills. Other terms used for our reproductive rights, while we know this is a euphemism for the right not to reproduce, as God intended. How can we sit at the table from a family and look at a distraught mom and dad in the eye when they tell their grandchildren who've been killed because of this? What counsel can we offer when the parents of more and more of our precious teens come to us hysterically upset because the state took away their child, such as they did with the Colestead family? It's already happening in other states such as Minnesota. It's up to us to stop it here. How will we answer the brutal killing of our most innocent right up to the moment of birth? Keep in mind that 60% of women who abort their children report being coerced into doing so. This is not about choice. This is about protecting the women and children of our state and preventing the state from destroying our families. Vote no on CI-128. I'd like Brad and Leslie to stand up real quick. They are ones that really put this 40 Days of Life at the Blue Mountain Clinic. So if you wanna get involved with that, see Brad or Leslie. Julia here at the church is in the process of getting some yard signs for the CI-128. So if you're interested in any of that, you know, check back to see when we've got that. I'm gonna turn the time over to Lynn for a few minutes to just briefly talk to us about CI-126 and 127. Lynn, you're up.
Okay. I'm here to talk about CI-126 and 127. CI-126 is what they term to be top-four vote-getter or jungle primaries. Both of these constitutional amendments will turn us into California, probably within two election cycles. So people like me will become extinct. You will not see Republican legislators over there anymore.
You will not see Republican legislators over there anymore. Um, so basically what, um, the jungle primaries do is you can have as many people as want to run in a race. Alaska had one race where they had 46 candidates. This bill does not require them to list party affiliation. So, you know, I, for years, I get phone calls. I don't know who to vote for judge, because they don't have to list party affiliation. It's really hard to kind of figure out where they might stand. Um, it also, if they don't, um, so basically, the four candidates that get the most votes move on to the general. And people are under the misperception that that's going to allow a Democrat, a Republican, Green Party, independent, uh, an array such as that. That typically does not happen. In a lot of races, you will get one party with four candidates. Um, and this applies to the governor, Lieutenant Governor race, Secretary of State auditor, Attorney General, Office of Public Instruction, your state representatives and senators, US representatives and senators. So the other confusion that this is going to put in there, your local and your school elections are not going to be run the same way. So you're gonna be dealing with two types of elections here in this state. And the argument that they're giving you, that, or I like to say it, the misinformation, is that this gives the voters more choices. Historically, it has proven to give you less choices. Um, CI-127 is what they call, um, ranked-choice voting. Um, I was a naive freshman legislator. We got a bill passed that prohibits ranked-choice voting in this state. When I left the hearing room, um, after giving testimony on that bill, um, I heard the native voices, "Mont Purg and Forward Montana," saying, "Oh, that's okay. If we can't, if this passes, we'll just go out and collect signatures and change their constitution, or if that doesn't work, we'll just start working on legislators and get it repealed next session." Um, this, basically what this does is if, let's say you've got six candidates in, in your election, you have to rank all of them, one through six. If you don't rank them one through six, your ballot is thrown out, so your votes don't count. So this is a great way to disenfranchise voters. Um, one election in New York, they had 140,000 ballots thrown out. So I, I just, you know, to me, and the people that it disenfranchises are your low-propensity voters, so people that maybe just vote in the general election, and your minorities. So where they're always, you know, harping on us that, "Oh, we shouldn't have IDs because it disenfranchises minorities." This disenfranchises minorities for sure. Um, let's see. So they tell you that under ranked-choice voting, winners will have majority support. They don't. Do the math. If they're throwing out 140,000 ballots, they are creating a false majority. A good example is Alaska. They put ranked-choice voting in, um, in 2022? No, 2020. Um, and 60% of the voters in Alaska voted for Republicans. A Democrat won that seat. So they just throw ballots out until they get the person that has the most of the ballots that are left. A lot of times, the person that got the most votes in the first round actually had more votes than the final winner. The other thing that they don't tell you about ranked-choice voting is we are going to have to ship all the ballots all across the state to one location. That's the only way you can count them. So we've got huge chain of custody problems there, and a lot of expense, because I would bet you that the public's going to demand they send those ballots in armored trucks to wherever we decide to count them. Logically, you'd say Lewistown, because that's the center of the state. But does Lewistown have the population to do the counting of all these statewide ballots? So it's not cheaper, as they say, that it is, because you still have your primaries. Yeah, a matter of fact, the other part that people don't think about, New York spent $15 million just educating people on how to vote under this method. Portland spent nearly $1 million, and that's just educating people. That's not talking about the new software they're gonna have to buy, the training of their staffs, um, the ballots, um, that they're gonna have to be printing up and shipping. Um, let's see, I'm trying to make this quick, 'cause I know that they, they were running over. But probably the most interesting thing, I did some research, um, on the groups that are funding this. You've got Action Now, who is out of Houston. You've got the 1630 out of Washington DC. And if any of you know of George Soros, this is one of his organizations. Article 4 out of Arlington, Virginia, and Unite PAC out of Denver, Colorado. Um, one of these groups is funded by Murdoch's daughter-in-law. And we're talking a lot of money. Last time I looked, they had $3 million coming in from out-of-state money to tell us how to vote. Um, so anyway, good news about Alaska. Um, this time around, they went, got signatures, they needed $26,000 to repeal ranked-choice voting. They got $42,000. So they will probably be repealing it. Um, the other thing that they try and tell you is, "This is something new. This is a new way to vote." Well, that's not quite right either, because in the 1920s, we had ranked-choice voting in the United States. And in the 1940s, they started repealing it. By 1963, uh, let's see, where was it? Cambridge, Massachusetts was the only one that had ranked-choice voting left. So we've tried this, it's failed. We don't need this. This, this will change Montana forever. Because I can tell you, as Sonia said, these constitutional amendments, once they're passed, they're very difficult to repeal. Um, for an example, at the legislature this year, we had 57 constitutional amendments proposed. Um, and what our leadership told us is, "If you wanna move forward with that, that's fine, but you've gotta get 100 legislators to sign on to that, and you have to prove to us that you've got $1 million to get it passed." So all of them failed, but, you know, um, there were other reasons for that. Um, so changing our constitution is a big deal, a real big deal. And these are gonna, as one of my neighbors said, and I've got signs out there if you want them, uh, "Don't Californicate Montana." Vote no on these two measures. They are, they are very bad news for us. So, anybody have any questions? Good.
Thanks, Lynn. Okay, boy, we dwindled down in numbers. Um, okay, uh, just an announcement, this Saturday, the Republican women are holding a garage sale out here in the parking lot. So if you have anything that you would like to get rid of, bring it on over here, and then, uh, that money will be donated to the Republican women. Um, also, out in the, um, in the foyer, our voter guides, uh, voter registration, um, any information you want on CI-126. Did you bring stuff, Lynn? Okay. CI-126, 27, and 28. Um, I just wanna thank Les and Mallory and Pastor Bruce and Julia and, um, uh, Doreen for helping put this together. We're so very grateful to have this church to do this kind of stuff, Ben. So thank you, everybody, for coming, and, uh, um, if you've got questions, I think people are out there to ask, to ask, excuse me, questions, too. Thanks so much, you guys.